Hundred and twenty percent of the local median area income. So it would be get used through a application process. So after they become, submit their project, it would be reviewed by city council to approve the rate. This is an item that Sam is looking to utilize to get the site developed. And I'd like to pass over to Sam to tell a little bit about the site.
Hey guys. Great to see everybody. We, come on up?
Yeah, sure.
Alright.
Get in the house.
I'll move away, I'll move up one row. Where do you want me, over here?
Wherever you would go.
I think I know you guys a lot up at this point. So, I'm not sure what exactly we've provided to you guys. But I know we sent recently a PowerPoint deck that had probably, you know, the whole thing or just like a little solid. Okay, so there's probably forty-five, I mean, slides on it. So it's obviously, I mean, we've evolved quite a bit. No problem. So obviously, you know, over the last however many years, we've been working on this. And we're now at the point where we've kind of got all of this momentum. It originally was just for purely use of mixed housing. And in talking with, you know, various state agencies, with City Planner, with all of you guys, various members of the community, you know, the project's really evolved from the last time that we had our site plan approval, I guess preliminary, I don't know if that was a study session or a pre-app meeting, of going from just a, you know, single purpose use of housing to really more of a development that incorporates a lot of the element of community and mixed use. And so, you know, we're now at this point, you guys are all familiar, this isn't just, you know, the residence and amenities. We want to have the gym be the gym. We want to be able to have events there. We want to be able to allow the historic society to hold a meeting there, to be able to celebrate, you know, the fact that the original nineteen twenty-six schools were stored. We want to have, you know, whether it's concerts or events, Harmer's Market, we want to be able to have a great connection to the car. When we go through our pre-app, or our site plan meeting, which I believe is what we want to cover, they send everything in today, or they're sending it.
Okay.
I signed the application like an hour ago.
It could be either November, December, depending upon evaluation by GIBL website.
Okay. We're gonna go through the project more, much more in depth. But, you know, we've, we've gone through this road of, you know, what makes sense in order for us to actually be able to make this happen. So, six or seven months ago, we kind of got with, you know, Brad Hanson with Local Kelly, Brownfield Authority, and Mishna, and talked about going through the tip program. And that's kind of how we started to kick things off. As the project evolved, we realized that, you know, due to loan sizing and, and really looking at our costs and kind of where the project evolved, the pilot program was much more efficient, you know, as far as the feasibility. And really, I think it works better for, it may, there's certain benefits for laterability to go into pilot programs as opposed to like a flat-out tax payment. And so, you know, this is kind of where we're at. And even if we do get this pilot, we still have a gap that we're gonna be looking to fill, either from the MBC or Mishna. So, we've got the momentum, we've got our general contractor ready, we've got our lending ready, I mean, our capital stack is figured out. We're, we're finally at a point where I feel like the community is gonna be happy with something that we're proposing. And the stars are kind of aligning. And the pilot is going to be instrumental to making it work. And I think that what Mishna and the MBC want to know is, you know, what contribution is the local municipality making? You know, does they really support this? Not just, you know, by saying, hey, we think it's a great project, but are they willing to make an investment in this development in order to, you know, show their support? So I think that's what this pilot accomplishes.
The project right now, at the site plan, is it provides the restoration of the most historical site we have here in Lake Village. That sits right in the middle of our builder's center and our DVA on our main street. It also backs up against our largest green space in the city. And this is the largest parcel in the city. So we're providing both community space, coworking, special coworking space, and housing. And it would be providing, again, I'm meeting earlier today with Mishna about missing little housing, possible funding, it's still a financial gap, missing right now for the project from funding from them. But the state overall is short seventy-five thousand housing units as we move forward. And we talk about how this could be one of those projects to show that there are additional housing units coming into the state to poor workforce housing. That's poor housing for individuals, a hundred and twenty percent for area median income. And the project also does, as you've seen, preserves the historical integrity of the center portion of the building while taking the additional wings that were added on in the seventies and eighties and adding those spaces into housing units. And I think Sam and his team have done, have done a fantastic job at updating the site plan as feedback has come from the community. The town hall, they, I watched the video of that, that was held earlier this year. It was, and, and look at the site plan as it was submitted, or there and then compared to now. And it really does incorporate the high school, the core of the gymnasium, could be a multipurpose space for basketball, for pickleball, for banquet, for meetings. And it also has opened up balconies that currently are closed off, providing more space that opens up that area. And also with coworking space, it allows this area to open to the public. So people can come in and visit the space, if not closed off, from the public, right on our main street. And it's gonna be a welcoming deal. And the front of the building would be set back from where it currently is, which would allow for a pocket card to be brought both in the front and behind the building, which allows for two entrances. And it has gotten to a point where if, they are ready to submit, like Sam said, they've submitted it either early today or they'll be submitted tomorrow. And we are, they're ready to, we're just working with Mishna, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, applying this gap funding to help them bring it home. So it's essentially a discussion, are you guys interested in this head program? Something they essentially need to make this happen? And if so, there is a little negotiation that can go back and forth with, between Austin developer. Including your package, it's just draft, special draft ordinance. They've submitted one, we've looked at a few. Traverse City is a really good example, so I'm gonna do the last, it's probably a force that's kind of helping pile the draft ordinance off of. So we know there's some, five weeks in there still. Thank you for mentioning Traverse City, or bringing some of those aspects to, really we're trying to get to that, I'll follow what you guys think.
Thank you.
Oh, I got a lot of questions. In, in no particular order. So, that's a kind, the contract for this then would be with the city, not with the DVA, correct? So the DVA would then essentially lose some funding over, or something, we have to look at the overall picture. And then, so with the share that we would get from the, call it our pilot income, we would then have to give a portion of that to the schools? And is that based on, because it says, at least in the draft ordinance in there, it said proportionally, based on what, it wasn't there. So is that proportion based on the six mils that we have to give to the state? Or is it the twenty-eight, twenty-six mils that we have to give to the local schools and the state total?
Yeah, having a general conversation with Michelle, we treat it as, essentially like your taxable portion that would go to schools, that same, but not.
So forty-eight percent would then go? It's not, because it said something about it has to go to the state instead of the local district. So it's a little confusing as to whether or not it's the state's six mils or is the whole twenty-eight getting included or whatever.
That's my understanding.
And just to kind of jump in, I brought Eric Toomey, who is kind of spearheading our incentive side on the development team. So Eric, if you want to jump in, if you feel like you need to, I mean, feel free to just, this is informal, right?
Yeah, I'll confirm that, that based on the, the total of dollars, based on the pilot calculation, that total amount gets dispersed to all of the taxing jurisdictions based on the various mils. So if it's six mils to state and you have whatever it is to local, or if you have indebtedness, anything to that sort, that proportionality is exactly correct.
So, so that would include, when you say indebtedness, that would include, so we have a roughly a four-mill billage for the roads that's being made.
Yeah, everything, so if there's, I know it's not ten mils, but if there's ten mils and there's ten taxing jurisdictions and there's ten dollars available, a dollar, 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 dollar.
Okay. And then, so the pilot program was pretty clear, doesn't apply to the common areas. So for example, the basketball area, for example. So, so then who goes about calculating the taxable value for that? Would that be our assessor, or?
Yeah, the assessor is gonna contribute taxable value. But I think that that's one of the areas that kind of stood up for discussion, when common areas would count as the, as part of the correctly calculated.
What, I mean, is that something like that's up for negotiation, or is that, you know?
I think so. I would say yes, because some of the common areas will benefit obviously the multifamily. There'll be a medley space in, in the common areas of the schools specifically that are tied to the multifamily piece. I would, I would surmise though that in terms of the coworking space that's been proposed, that would likely be on a separate, sort of you condo that out from the overall pilot, if you will, for lack of a better term. But everything that would be tied to the multifamily would likely be under the purview of the pilot.
Correct. So that entire green space is, you know, obviously if we're gonna make a part of that an amenity to residents and that we're, you know, part of it is allowing community events and things like that to participate there, but to not let that obviously turn into a taxable, you know, part of the parcel where then now all of a sudden we're counteracting the pilot.
Then it's based on like a lien or something like that, that that would be included separately?
And you mentioned the length of the term, this is fifteen years. It was a little confusing in the document, it essentially would be based upon the developer's debt service. So what exactly does that mean?
Well, from my understanding, it's a statutory requirement of the maximum of fifteen years. So it was previously required in those.
Yeah, so our debt service is thirty-five years. So what we would do is whatever the statutory amount is, we would, we would be requiring some kind of an extension as long as we're meeting the KMI requirements.
And then, can you explain to somebody, maybe it's you, and your, the section C two of the ordinance, of the, you know, the draft ordinance, as an example? Section C two, it says, subject to subsections, blah, blah, blah. For a rehab project, an amount that is the lesser of the tax on the property on which the project is located for the tax you're proceeding to date on which rehabilitation is commenced, or ten percent of the annual shelter rent. So?
Just there's a difference, I believe, between just how they classify it, whether it's a construction or rehabilitation. It's a part of the statute.
Right, I see how you mean.
And it's in the statute, so it's just setting it, kind of copying what is in the state statute.
Okay, yeah, I get the bifurcation, but the, I was just, the, the, so basically, it's either, so this would be considered a rehab, I assume? Because a partial, part of the building is, you know?
I mean, it's a gray area, I mean, it's, it is a rehab. It's also new.
Could be looking at it.
I mean, you could leave one layer or the other. I mean, it's really both in a lot of ways.
Right, oh, because there's a big difference there.
Yeah, I don't know if that's, if that's gonna come into play, where it would have to be also determined whether?
It's an adaptive reuse project.
What those amounts is, because there's some significant difference until it's collected, it would be a requirement, you know, to separate those out.
Eric, do you remember how we were aiming on classifying the project?
Likely a rehab, but there's ground, can you, can you read that one, one more time?
Yeah.
If that's, I hadn't seen this version of it.
Yes, this is subject to a few subsections. For a rehabilitation project, an amount that, this is the dollar amount.
Yeah.
So it says, for a rehab project, an amount that is the lesser of the tax on the property on which the project is located for the tax you're proceeding the date on which the rehab is commenced, or ten percent of the annual shelter rent obtained from the property.
Yeah, so I, I think that's sort of establishing the minimum floor of what the taxable value or the amount that you're collecting. The payment in lieu of, essentially, you're gonna be in a separate tax roll. So regardless if it's a ground up or if it's a rehab, where it applies as it relates to whether it's a one percent pilot or a ten percent pilot, that amount will be on a separate tax roll that's approved by Mishna through an affidavit. So when you're establishing the minimum, the minimum amount that would be paid would likely be equal to the percentage of the pilot, not what the preceding year would be. So I, I hope that answers that, as far as the rehab versus the ground up.
Even given though the fact that it's currently a vacant building, so it's probably?
The taxable value is probably a lot lower than if it was? Yeah, I mean, like we're, I mean, our projection, I think, I mean, based on right now, I think we're paying, you know, twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars a year in property taxes, and it's gonna be significantly higher.
But I think those are two different calculations there. I don't think it's just simply establishing like a ground level. It's two different calculations depending on what it's gonna be classified as. And maybe they'll just say, well, we'll just go with ten percent of the annual shelter rent. Because that's the same for both of those two options. Maybe that's what would be the most likely thing to do if you can't determine, you know, percentage of rehab versus the percentage of new construction.
Well, if that's just copied from the statute, I gotta imagine the statute's gotta have some language in terms of the definition of what's a rehab versus what's a?
I honestly, we'll have to look into that, but I honestly don't recall that it did. But I can, I can look that up and see.
I have a question related to this, because Eric, you just mentioned that whether it's a ground up construction or rehabilitation, it would be the same, but the?
Where the pilot applies as it relates to the multifamily piece? Yeah, because I, if we could just like step back from the act, do you guys all, I'm, I'm just sitting here. She's filming me and she keeps, you keep moving back and forth, you can, you can see me this way, if that's okay.
That'd be great.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I'll prepare. You sit here.
Oh, okay.
Nice to see you today. So, so I think what's important to, to, I, I haven't seen that, and that is probably formal language as it relates to the original pilot model ordinance that Mishna published, that's incorporated into this. So I don't want to like circumvent that necessarily, but if we did to read it just to understand it and we can get that exactly to the full nature, like ground up and rehab, that's related to non-taxes. But the pilot works insofar as, what annual shelter rents is like, is an important like key term in pilots. And so annual shelter rents is defined as the gross rent that you receive, okay, less vacancy. Okay, vacancy can also include like, if someone doesn't pay their rent, and we call that in real estate terms like rehab, there's like bad debt, and if you're in the real estate business, you can, I mean, we don't have concessions as well. So you say to somebody, you're gonna pay ten months, ten bucks a month in rent, but for the first two months, we'll give you enough. Okay, I'm just making up those numbers. So you take the total vacancy, bad debt, and concessions. So gross rent, less the vacancy, plus the bad debt, plus concessions, that can add up. And equals effective gross income, okay? So it's like gross, less vacancy, equals effective gross income. Then you take less utilities, okay? And then, and that equals annual shelter rents. So then the pilot is calculated as a percentage of the annual shelter rents. And so the understanding in, well, this is new in terms of workforce housing versus life at low income tax credits, is that it's predicated on performance of the asset. So the more rent that you're bringing in, the less vacancy you have, and multiply that against, against that percentage, that's your taxes, that gets distributed against the taxing jurisdictions. Similarly, in this scenario, for all of it that applies to the ground up or the adaptive reuse of the buildings, majority of the units are in the ground up component, apply to those ground up units. But there, depending on how we work through this, if there are items that are related to the school that are common area spaces or that benefit the multifamily, you kind of have to have a multifamily, you can say, to lease it? Then the pilot would apply to that as well. So then it sort of takes that space out, you're not getting taxed on that common area space because the taxes are specifically based on income, if that makes sense, to the project. Does that, does that answer, does that answer?
Well, the question I had is, you know, in this clause that we brought up, it specifically says, I mean, this is draft.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
So it specifically says for a new construction project, the amount that is greater of the tax on the property, or ten percent of the annual. But for rehab, it's the lesser of the tax, or ten percent.
So is this taken from the statute? Or is this taken from the ordinance that we, the draft that we sent you?
No, this was taken from Traverse City.
Traverse City is, has, has a sample, but it, it's based?
We had a couple drafts come back before, then we put this one.
It's based upon the, the state housing development forty Act.
So I'm trying to figure out the logic of why you would state something like this, as the greater of the tax on the property if it's new construction. And it's a little bit nitpicky, I know, like it's really?
No, no, it's okay, I haven't, I haven't?
That's what I was getting at, I just, it's just, it's a little strange.
If you want to get technical, it's MCL one twenty-five point one four one five A, sub three, sub A, sub one, sub two.
Can we, I don't mean to punt, but because we haven't, if you're okay with this, is, I haven't read this. So to the extent that we could like punt it and then answer it separately and email to you with that, would that be acceptable?
Sure, and this is totally something that can be modified before it gets passed, right? So?
Well, those provisions that we're talking about, however that pans out, that's not modified, that's in the draft. So that's however that would work out.
Is that in the law, just by Traverse City, or is that in the law?
No, that's what I just stated, was the state law. The state housing.
This is verbatim out of that?
Correct.
That I don't understand a lot of the logic.
Well, I mean, I think that, you know?
It doesn't matter.
Are you, I'm sorry, I don't think we've met before. Are you, what, are you the city?
I'm, uh, yes, I'm the city gym, I'm Scott Baker.
Got it, nice to meet you.
I've done some work, I've exchanged emails with you before.
I don't think we've met, met the person. So again, I have my tree here, so if he would be able to probably speak, you know, like, my, my hand about what skateboards are. I don't know what the, I mean, that's definitely something that like we could probably bring to the next meeting, if we're going to. I think we're trying to pick, I mean, there's, you know, I know you brought slides, Eric. We were modeling off of other municipalities that have those. So there's, you know, five or six that we, you know, kind of had examples that we brought that are paying between, you know, one and five percent. And we're asking for four. And regardless of the technical, you know, legal side of things, which, you know, I, however they were able to figure it out, there'd be no reason why, I don't think, you know, why we wouldn't be able to figure it out. I think the question that I have is, are you guys open to this and is this something that you guys would support? Because whether it's one percent, or ten percent, or six percent, or whatever percent, it's an investment to make a village. I mean, that's what you guys are essentially doing. You're sacrificing the actual armed property taxes that you get on normal market rate deals in order to have a economy.
And if I may just jump in too, as far as this goes, if, if you are so inclined to do this for this project, this is not just this project. I mean, it may end up being just this, but that's the whole purpose of this law. And it's especially, especially applicable to the, to this new work, workforce housing. But for a pilot, this is the one particular program that does require this individual ordinance. Then it also requires that there's an application as part of it, which Eric has indicated in his information as well, that you will have to do so that anybody that comes to you can follow the same guidelines, have the same application process, the same, you know, same review, to, to make it, you know, very open and accessible to, to other people, other entities that may wish to do this, utilize or ask to utilize the same process.
So are the negotiations need to be followed as well, if, you know, once this goes into place?
Correct, well?
You're saying like, if we have a certain set of negotiations for a certain, and another, we have a different set of, you know, assets for another invest, investing for a different project?
Right. Every, I mean, I'm sure every development is different, every thing has, you know, every developer has something different potentially to bring to the table, but the process itself of, you know, this is the application, what are the qualifications of those applicants, things of that nature, and then the evaluation process by you guys would be the same. Like what are they bringing to the city, what are they? So you might negotiate with them differently, like, oh, well, they can bring this, they're bringing this to the city, and another project might be bringing that, but they're both bringing value to the city. So it's like, it was all more of an objective list of evaluation and application, if that makes sense. So that you have that out there, this is in place, and then we go forward with, you know, giving evaluation for this project in particular. And this is the reason why it's being brought to you, but I'm just saying that from a legal standpoint, we need to have that before we go forward, if you say, yes, we, we're interested in exploring this, well then let's get the procedures in place with ordinance and the application, and then, you know, kind of some review criteria, to get that in place and then go, you know, this can need to be put in place at the same time, we're still working, of course. But just so that then it's there for any other potential developers in the future to utilize as well in a fair and open manner.
Similar to how, I'm saying, even development, can you be, ordinance is put in place, or can you be open to any developer needs, any negotiations?
Correct, but as to David's point then, that negotiations might be slightly different within that very market, if that makes sense. But it still gives you the frame of how, what to do.
So technically, can we say we're like interested in moving forward with looking at the draft ordinance to make sure it's correct? To show interest?
Yeah, I mean, the pilot, just, just if we put a pilot ordinance in place, that's in no way an approval with this particular project. It's just, it's a good thing to have the ordinance so that any developer comes to us with it, and then we just get to look at the?
I know, he's asking for one thing, but he wants to come at it, so I'm saying, is there a way to show his interest without him?
Yeah, and I don't think I'm saying I want a different thing than what he wants, but I'm just saying we need to go, and I get what you're looking for here, is not getting down into necessarily the niche of what the dollar amounts are gonna be at this point. We don't have time for that, but I'm just saying we need to get this in place before you can really move too far ahead with it as far as getting the ordinance adopted. And in conjunction with that, we should institute the application. And that, that's where you guys can kind of think about, you know, what things you're looking for in getting these types of developments. And it doesn't mean stopping, you know, reviewing this or anything, but really technically, you had this, any specific, you know, anything final until you get all these ordinance in place, along with, how you up them to do your applications.
All true, you need the ordinance in place first, then become project specific for whether it's one or ten percent pilot, I mean, consultant. I, in, in reading this, just here today, to be able to answer your question, so we don't look at it for punting or being transparent, is Traverse City has a model ordinance. And the city of Detroit right now is doing the same exact thing. So a couple weeks ago, council went out with the mayor to set a project, and just last week, we went to the subcommittee. Tomorrow it's getting, it's getting approved. What they're doing in this scenario, if I may, is involved in Detroit, is they are establishing a model ordinance, but then thereafter, once established, can be approved and administered. And so this is, no matter what, if you are in Traverse City, you can, whether it's ground up or adaptive reuse or rehab, it's a ten percent pilot. And then you can go get it, you know, if you want something different, ten, if you are not asking for ten, you're asking for four, is then we have to come back and also that. So in reading this, so section one, two, if I may, is to say, the greater the tax on the property is located, well, the reality is, is that when you have new hell of land, the tax on that is going to be, so the preceding year is gonna be far less than all the pilot. So they're saying greater than ten percent from the preceding year of the value of the land. Now, if you're doing a rehab, and let's say it's a rehab, that's like an existing multifamily building. And I'm guessing that's what, that's what's sitting here, frankly, in the top of that, is I could be wrong. The intent is that if it's an existing multifamily building, well, you likely convert it into a multifamily. More quarter of warranty, the tax may actually be less than what they were the preceding year. In this scenario that I'm reading one and two, I would, based on what Sam is trying to accomplish, is that it really is under sort of that new construction review. Because it's not existing, it's not a rehab of existing multifamily. It is an existing building that's being converted to.
To multifamily.
To multifamily. Yeah, I didn't understand that. Yeah, and sorry for being long, long-winded on that, but, but this is a model ordinance, as I understand Traverse City, of like, you come in, you want a ten percent pilot, it's just workforce housing. Now you can come in, the housing department approves it, administrates it, and you're now having to go to the council. So I agree with your lawyer here who said, you're establishing ordinance to then move to a project specific ordinance, if that, if that.
And well, your clarification of new construction versus rehab, like if this isn't a tax. But that's my thought.
Okay, great. That's helpful.
Um, I mean, I would just say that personally, like I want to see something happen with this property that they did construction. The only way that's going to happen is if you project, you have to set up some, to make that happen in a special form. It's clear that some tax benefit can happen in order for the pilot to be affordable to you guys. Um, and while, and I want as many options available to the city to support this right now to make that happen. So to me, this is one option. But if the city council approves this pilot ordinance, that doesn't mean that the only option, right? Sam mentioned TIF, I mean, not less desirable, maybe a pilot is more desirable, but it doesn't mean we write off TIF as an option, right? I think we still need to be creative about how we come to some, uh, resolution about what's the best way to fund a project that kind of exists in the city. It's residents, company that owns the property and other entities that, um, interact with the property. Like, you know, the community, uh, residents using the community space, or businesses using the space, or visitors to the city. Uh, you know, all I'm saying is, it, it, just because we were approved of hitting the, of the pilot ordinance, it means that position. It just gives us another nail to, another tool to work with. That's my.
Another nail.
So Sam, your question was, are we interested in the, repeat with your question.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think what I'm trying to understand is, you know, we, we have a site plan approval meeting coming up. Regardless of whether there's a TIF or a pilot or some kind of tax benefit, it still doesn't fill the jug of what is needed or remaining that something happened. We actually need a grant or some kind of a community revitalization program loan, um, to fill the remaining gap, which is a large gap, uh, to make this happen. But as we have gone through that process, I know that we're not going to be anywhere near obtaining those incentives from the state of Michigan. If I don't have nature of villages support, um, on what tool or mechanism, that they would be willing to invest with, you know, partner with our company in order to, right? Whether it's TIF or, or pilot, um, so they want to make sure that I've gone everywhere before I go. And my question is, are you interested in exploring the pilot program? We've, we've spent months, um, exploring the TIF, and I mean, we can provide answers as to why we're not able to make that work for the project. Um, without you having any of those details, I mean, I would be asking the same thing to you, what tool? But, so again, this is, this is really, it's, it's, it's an open book type of a situation where I have to give everything to the, uh, to the state. Um, from our costs and what we're charging, kind of any fees that the developer is charging. I mean, it, it is a, um, you know, it's, it's a wide open, you know, lay everything out there kind of process. So we have no problem, you know, showing, um, any information needed as to, you know, why the pilot program makes the most sense. As far as the best chances of this actually happening. Um, but, so the question is, is this something that you guys are willing to explore and look at drafting an ordinance? Because without it, there really is no point for us to continue to spend the time and the dollars that we've already spent, you know, out of pocket over the last two years. You know, bringing this concept, uh, in part of you guys.
Well, we could consider, continue to consider the TIF as an option.
Because the TIF doesn't, the TIF doesn't fill, the TIF fills.
But neither, and the pilot doesn't fill the bucket either, so.
Again, I don't have my, I, I.
That's what I want to see. You're asking like, you're saying it's an open book. I want to see a comparison, why the.
Yeah, of course. All that information I'm, I'm willing to share with you, and again, you, I'm just giving you my word, but it doesn't. At this meeting, I don't think that, you know, it's, I mean, we, we don't have the numbers and the things like that present. So maybe that's the next step to play for Village is another study session that actually has the, the two programs or the different programs. And, and we go through that before we start to draft the ordinance. And that's, that's totally.
I'm not saying we shouldn't look at the pilot ordinance. Like I said, I think we need as many tools available for us as we possibly.
Well, you're actually, you could also go for a TIF and a pilot. I mean, there's also ways to, to go through that.
I think we can do these things in parallel. That's why, I'm not saying stop this and come back with one before we, but I'm saying, I personally, I think we should actually consider looking at drafting this, adding this ordinance to pilot ordinance. Because it gives us another tool, whether it actually gets used for this project or not, it provides the city level tool, provides a partner's level tool. I just want to make sure that it's clear that just because we're doing that, looking at applying, adding a pilot ordinance to our city ordinance, it's not stopping the use of any other level of, of, of.
Yep, that's, that's, that's completely fair, and I think it's.
And Mr. Smith's got a lot to do on the act and everything, so is that.
And Sam, and, and Amy, he's got a lot to do on the answer. And, and I just say the other thing is, is it relates to identifying the tools. There's, there's one side, which is, we're sitting on one side of the table, and frankly, a public type of partnership is we're sitting on both sides of the table together. I think that is the nature, and that's what Sam is hoping to do, and his apartment is company. But I think that there's two sides to this. One is what is the, 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 the most financially viable outcome to see the project under construction that's redeveloped? And the creation of the attainable housing. The other side is what's the biggest thing for the buck for the city? And there's qualitative aspects of seeing that building redeveloped, this beautiful structure and the amazing park and all of this.
I think that's what I'm.
So for the housing TIF, is it, is it the biggest thing for the buck in terms of how much you're going to collect versus how much you'll collect on the pilot? So I think being able to have those conversations with you to see what, what's the benefits of both the development, but also the benefits of the city. And I think what you'll find frankly, is that as it relates to the pilot, on an annual basis for the first probably twenty years, and I'm like, putting my foot in my mouth right now, saying this. But I, I'm almost frustrated, because the value of the pilot actually on a manual basis will give you a bigger thing for your buck than, say, around the other side of people.
I hear your thoughts.
Yes, yeah, for sure. Uh, I'm, I'm ninety-five percent sure of that. So like, but it's worth that conversation.
Right, I mean, they, right, I mean, we've been working on this and going through models and numbers and villages and all that, you know, uh, detail for months. So it's not, you know, I can completely understand your position of, well, oh, you're pushing us in one direction. Why? I mean.
I'm not, I'm not saying you're pushing us in one direction. I'm saying.
By, I mean, I am. I'm pushing towards the pilot. I mean, to me, that's, for me to develop this property, I'm, I need a pilot.
Then I need to understand why not the TIF or something else.
Hundred percent, exactly. You started to hit on like one of the last ones, that was answering to my question, which answered to, wouldn't I have to do the discussion? And, and you're not going to have an answer tonight, but, you know, I agree that adding the pilot as a tool is literally something I think is, is, is good. And then with respect to your project, I mean, one thing that I'll want to see, um, because it's hard to visualize. So, so right now, with, with, you know, if we're just taxing you normally, you know, it's essentially a twenty-three mil, so that's two point three percent of the taxable value of the property. And how does that compare to, you know, four percent of the, you know, annual rent? I mean, it, it's, right now, these are all very fuzzy. Don't, there's no, there's no, nothing concrete to help us understand what we're giving up versus what we're getting. And that's something that I would want to be able to understand before we move forward with this.
And, and it's not just exclusively about the tax revenue, because obviously if there's a development happening there, and when it's fully empty, it's probably something that's better as long as the project is.
Right, not always tax values overall.
And it will help other entities around, and it provides another service that residents and business owners and community could eventually get benefit from. So it's, there are soft benefits.
I'm sure we're going to have a few more.
We need a meeting that's going to show the difference between, uh.
No, I, I think this is a dialogue to say, hey, do you want to really, are you guys interested in some kind of, it's, it's, you're going to be giving a tax dollar. And it's our duty to be able to say, well, here's what we think and here's why it's a partnership. So even though I'm pushing the pilot because I think that that's needed, I, I, like, like Jason's saying, we need to understand why. And I think that that's great, and let's start this dialogue and let's, let's work on it together.
But I think in parallel, we can work on language.
And I think that.
Yeah, or you might give the answer, so just from my little bit of understanding, so all with the TIF or pilot, pilot's going to allow the more affordable housing options? Is that right?
Well, I mean, I think there's a few different ways that, like, the, going with separate pilot is workforce housing, right? It's, it's that hundred twenty percent AMI affordable housing. Like a, a li-tech deal, like a low income housing tax credit deal, where maybe you're now going to like, you know, forty to eighty percent AMI, which is like truly affordable. Which is, you know, a, a, a much different process. So, um, we, again, I don't have, I'm not an affordable housing guy, but I've taken this, this over the last couple of years. I've taken this to some of the major affordable housing developers in the city, you know, in Detroit. Mark or Peter Calorico, who owns a lot of the stuff downtown Detroit, I don't know who he is. But, you know, they look at this because part of my, like, I have to do something with this property. I can't continue to sit on it and carry it, and every time there's a storm, you know, I gotta have Bellford out there. I mean, it's, it's a problem. Um, so, you know, I, I, I went to those guys and I said, hey, take a look at it. They didn't think that it made sense for an affordable deal to go with them. Coincidentally, in two thousand twenty-one or two thousand twenty-two, this legislation passed for the TIF and the pilot. So during the, when we came to you guys in April, I was all about the TIF, bringing the drug on the TIF. And there's also a PA two-ten, which is a basement, which you basically latch on to the TIF, which basically increases the taxes, is what I'm currently paying for the first ten years. And then you file the TIF for, you know, between twenty and thirty-four. When I learned more about the pilot program, I, I then shipped it over to, to that. And basically, the TIF and the pilot are more in, in, in attainable housing, which is different than affordable housing. Affordable is that like Mishda, you know, li-tech, forty to eighty percent AMI versus the TIF and the pilot are like, hey, you know, it's, it's no more than a hundred twenty percent. And with the TIF, you're not necessarily, because the way that the TIF statute is, is written, to my very limited knowledge, because so many of the costs going into this. This is about a roughly a forty million dollar investment. Most of that forty is eligible for TIF. You're never going to recapture forty million dollars in property taxes over thirty years. So I wouldn't necessarily need to, uh, and this is on a call with, with, with Tony and Chad from Mishda, actually have all of the units in the, uh, you know, multifamily housing be affordable. Versus the pilot, you would, you would need them all to be affordable. So there's, there's so many different things in this guy's, I mean, it's, it's a conversation, we got to have more of these conversations. So I hear you guys a lot in the group, but hopefully that answers your question.
It's different. But it sounds like, as a means of the, of the subsequent conversation, which you're looking for, just, just so that we're, we're clear on our side of like, what is it going to need to provide? It sounds like an understanding of the value of the housing, both for the developer and the both value in this, and not the soft stuff. But I think soft stuff is just, it's very nice frankly to hear, I have a lot of these conversations with Sam and other people. And many times the soft stuff doesn't really come out the importance of that and land use and real estate supplies, you know, frankly. But is, is, but to clarify, what is it you're looking for, is to say, what would the taxes be if there was, if there was nothing, right? There was no, no pilot, no tax. What does it look like with the taxes with the housing? What does it look like with the pilot? And then show you what the value to both of us are over maybe it's a fifteen year period or something to that, to that effect. And then, I think there's some, some actually very concrete quantitative things as it relates to loan sizing, um, for the senior lender. And you all know that like it takes debt and equity to, to build these projects. And so you have developers who are making a massive investment, but then also taking on the risk of debt. How the housing TIF and the pilot change the loan sizing with the senior lender is really impactful. And frankly, he's not touching upon it, but that's something that we can talk about through some bullet points, but we won't give the exact answer, we'll give the bullet points of how it impacts it. So that said, so what the taxes are without the review of the TIF, what they are in the pilot, and the power of each of the two tools for the project. Does that, does that make sense?
And is there any other options, tools that might be available that are worth considering? Or you could say, here are five other things that we already looked at, and they're the, the reasons why you don't come close to what a pilot would. I don't want, you don't need to go into like super depth about those things, or we just can be aware of things that's.
Sure.
And maybe there aren't any, but if there are.
And just to give you an idea, maybe just, I don't know, this is, however, is really relevant at this point. Things in, in conjunction with what they're saying about what kind of housing will be provided, you know, with a hundred and twenty percent of focusing on workforce type housing. So things that some other ordinances and other, um, communities have used as criteria for consideration. For instance, whether the pilot will increase the number of available workforce housing units in the city. Whether the pilot will reduce the functional obsolescence of an existing building or housing unit. Whether the pilot is likely to encourage expansion of the population of the city. Uh, whether the location of the workforce housing is consistent with the rules and objectives of the master plan. Whether the development or rehabilitation of the workforce housing requires any variances. Um, whether the pilot will result in provision of housing amenities, and whether the pilot will facilitate provision of an attractive viable housing units to attract people as well. So I mean, I think there's some kind of financing perhaps that also falls into it, makes a bit of a difference as to what type of housing you're making under the different plans that they can do, so.
I'm, I'm glad you brought that up as a part of my research, looking into the next agenda, through the pilot, specifically. I look at the master plan, because the guidance for pilot suggests that you should. So the master plan actually calls out attainable housing, right? Non-subsidized, you know, housing. It's a city that, that part of the master plan is provided for, is for housing like that, which is necessary for this, this is the master plan.
Something we need to, um, just do for the next study session, or we think we should.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get there, see how fast we can turn this around, and then.
What about the ordinance?
Yeah, the one thing I did bring up is, Traverse City mentions five votes, and that's not in our charter, so.
Yeah, you can do, I, I can, just as a te- technical thing too, some, some ordinances include that, what I described, like those kind of criteria. And there are other ordinances say, um, that there will be a policy, uh, a policy created by city council, um, resolution that will determine it. So it doesn't necessarily, there's some tweaks you can do stylistically as to like how you want to have your review process, you know, whether you want it essentially stated in the ordinance. Or the ordinance allows for a resolution, so that, I guess that can give some more flexibility at times if you want to change those kinds of things. By not having them, it's just easier to change it if you don't have it in the.
So some of these, some of the things are like, uh, this needs to be in there, but the, the amount is going to number, or the specificity of how it's done.
Right.
Can be tailored to what makes sense.
Right, the ac- the actual like application process, part of it. So you have to have, as the law says, you have to have criteria, you have to have that, but it doesn't tell you what that is or where it has to be.
Great.
And again, this is a fluid, fluid conversation, guys. I'm just like, we're in the details, we're looking at it kind of like this. So we feel like we know exactly what, you know, makes it all sense, but I realize, I mean, it's going to take. Again, at this point, I mean, we're, we're willing to, you know, spend the time and go through the study meetings and explore these options with you guys and make sure that it's mutual.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, actually, you know, I wonder one other small thing, um, since, since Sam's here. One of the things we talked about in the last meeting, adjacent, well, we, we have a potential grant for the, the park, um, which is adjacent.
Obviously it can be a big amenity for, for your, um, potential tenants. And, you know, one of the things that we have to do is come up, how much do we need for the match? Hundred thousand or something or our portion or something or something. So I don't know if that's something that we can work into this as well, because it would be mutually beneficial if that's a hundred or one seventy, that's a big thing. Right, well, I'm just saying, you, you just, we're, we're, we're working on trying to figure out how to, how to fund our portion. And this might be a way to, you know, collaborate as well as part of this whole process.
Well, and again, I don't know. I mean, some of the questions are like, what are you actually doing in the park?
Yeah.
And I think, you know, the M E C state wants to know what, it's not, yeah, it's not even just what investments the developer's making. They want to look at what investments Lake Village is making in its own community. So I think that's a, that's gonna be a great, you know.
Be mutually beneficial.
I, I think so. Um, and, you know, I think that it's gonna take, like, let's just assume hypothetically that we're all agreeing that with whatever tool or mechanism it is. We figure out that how and private, public partnership. I see that the bigger hill for mine right now is trying to get the incentive from, from the state. Um, I think just personally, that might be one of our larger bills to climb, like this whole thing. And I think that, you know, it's gonna be important because I, I, I don't think Lake Village is asking state of Michigan to invest in this.
But frankly, in Ford's state, we need to be a local contribution. So when Sam kicked it off early there about like this local support, like if the state's gonna make an investment, then the locale, they want the locality to see some of the investment as well. Um, not to anybody's horn, but Austin's doing a very nice job. Public does get there, so just wanted to throw that out there.
All that information was very helpful.
Yeah, public improvement data, so garnering support from politicians at both the state and the county level. So like, there's really been, the whole thing's good at this.
Well, thank you guys. Um, I've been, I could be in contact.
All right, thanks. Really appreciate it.
No problem. Um, yeah, public comment?
Before we get to public comment, I'll show you guys an email Friday.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
So you guys, you know, we got holiday lighting for City Hall campus. So typically D E A funds this, unfortunately, past two meetings, we couldn't actually vote on this, do a form this year. So Austin, we're talking just so we can be sure we are on a contract schedule. So we're, we're, you know, getting especially happy any calls in time. But we can see if, if, especially who may get the, the highlight contractors tonight. And then we put up that we're requesting the E D A next day to get the ordinance covered.
If we, uh, and timing is up, yes, right, we want to get something done with the contract to be able to fill up. Options will become fewer. Uh, if the city agrees to take on the contract, and the E D A for whatever reason, you know, doesn't get around to approving, you pay for it. Or chooses not to. How we're gonna deal with that.
That, that, I was gonna say, President Burden, the issue I see with that is two voting numbers in the E D A right here. They also have it specifically lined out in their budget to cover this cost every single year. So I really see a hard time with that. Especially, especially, uh, and say, this, this was an action item two months ago. And unfortunately someone had to leave about fifteen minutes before we got to the open.
There's been no sign of a sanction among any of the, the numbers.
And this year's been a lot different. Last year, Austin, I think we're here, we know there's some issues of holiday lighting. Austin, they've already had multiple votes, multiple different designs in the pack yet. Sam, right up, right up budgets.
I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, and we, we completely understand that from just a staff perspective, we know for us, it's essentially like new situations here. We don't, we, we either pay it and the city has said they're covering costs, or we say, hey, we're just not doing licenses here, can't get anyone to approve it. And then all somewhere.
Just so long as the transfer happens back.
We're, we're.
Very good argument.
So if you guys are applying, that'll be just something for some other local, or any meeting.
It is, it's, it's not on the agenda. Good? So we have public comments, you have three minutes to speak. Anyone want to be heard?
Just have a question. I'm sorry, but.
Do you have your name?
Yeah, Jonathan. What is the relationship between this pilot program and what's been done in some redevelopment in downtown Detroit? So specifically like its change, I know has a fifteen year tax abatement. Is that pilot or is that a different, is that the other program?
I don't think we have any information about what's happening.
Well, it's just that it's been in the news and.
So, so the pilot program is now, uh, as a state law, like what a couple of years ago, it was modified. It used to be just for attainable housing, now it's been modified for this workforce housing. So it's a state law, any community can enact it, um, like we're talking about the, each community has set their specific ordinance. And then they go from there. So Detroit had it for a while, current cities had it for a while, for a while, they're probably using them as examples. Like, and we can see what they've done, what they've.
Are you my concerns or ground that are, are related to? I see it in a way as being similar to a new development where, um, it's a condo development. Where the H O A, low balls, the, um, the fees for the first few years. So I kind of feel like when I looked at the numbers for its change, which is a high level, you know, project. It just seems like there's a fifteen year timeline. You know, that your, the taxes after the fifteen years just get out. Is there, and then the other question that comes up is, is this guaranteed to be, continue to be rental housing? And, and, uh, serve this purpose after the fifteen years is up? Or does it get redone as condos at that point? Either by plan or it's just the way. That's it.
Thank you. Does anyone else have a like to be here?
Um, I'll go. My name's Autumn Suzanneath. Hi. Um, so I think this is such an exciting opportunity. That school is such a beautiful building and it's been empty for far too long. Um, there's some concern it's, uh, been used as a tax write-off. I wish, uh, Mr. Sernow was still in the room, so I could ask that question. Um, in two thousand fourteen, I reached out to his dad, Jeff Sernow. And, um, I called him with big ideas and he was so kind to me. And we arranged for me and my husband to tour the school. Um, it turns out I wasn't the only person dreaming about making that building into a multi-use, adaptive, restored, revitalized, uh, city center. Um, lots of other residents were thinking along the same lines. Ed Blondin, for example, he and I talked afterwards. Um, my husband panicked because it was such an enormous idea. And we wanted to do it grassroots and involve lots of people. And, um, we had just had a baby. And so it didn't happen. But, and then unfortunately Jeff, uh, Sernow died the next year. Um, so my understanding is that the, the deed, um, has a restrictive covenant that, uh, is supposed to be used in some way for educational purposes. And I'm wondering what has happened to that deed of gift? And I'm also wondering why we wouldn't, uh, insist on the first floor being multi-use, uh, retail. Um, also, when you look at it, if you really look at those seventy-five, um, dream fantasy renderings that they provided, um, in the packet, those look amazing, but you can't have both a stage and four bathrooms in the same spot. Um, if you look at the, not blueprints, but the layout, there's no actual space for a cafe, even though they're using the signage for a cafe. There's no actual hookup for a cafe. The mixed-use workroom is a very small room, looks like there's a big screen TV. It looks like about half the size of this room. I mean, that's nice for the residents of that building. It's not for the Lathrop residents. It's not for the people who have invested here and would love a basketball court we could access. Would love maybe a pool out back on that, on that grounds instead of building a four acre parking lot slash building that's going for this middle housing project. Why not do, I mean, if you look at retail space rental versus residential, you're looking at a difference of like a hundred and sixty dollars per square foot. Um, you can get, you know, in, in, if you compare like Ferndale prices, um, they're getting right now, uh, you know, for the, for the residents in Ferndale, they're getting two hundred and forty dollars a square foot. And for, I'm, excuse me, I said it backwards. They're getting for retail, two hundred and forty dollars per square foot. And for residents, they're getting thirty-four dollars a square foot. Um, so it's, it's a better, you know, and you can tax those retail places. And you can actually charge, I don't know what, a membership. We used to have the swim club and we charged memberships. And that was such a community building, you know, uh, thing. And, and here we have this potential for great building, for community building, for unity, unifying the community, giving us a, a common space, a true mixed-use, a restoration. And, and we have to be really particular about, is it a rehab? Is it restore? Is it revitalization? All those words are legal terms that affect our funding. We could get historical funding for buildings that need, you know, that need repurposing money. It's not cheap. He's right. It's probably gonna be millions of dollars. But Lathrop's worth it. And we used to be a community where we had awesome stuff, awesome architecture. We need to keep that awesome architecture, not do what's called a facadeectomy where you just push out the back, get rid of it, all the innards. I see that they're planning on keeping the basketball court. That's great. But really bedrooms from wall to wall in there. And that should be, that first floor should be, should be retail and mixed-use space. And then the, you could do loft, luxury lofts on the top, luxury lofts across the top. Why not?
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Anyone? And is there a council comments? Council, do you have anything?
Uh, I just want to reiterate what I said during the discussion around the pilot. From, from my perspective, it's providing another deal for us to be able to, potentially with other organizations that might want to very, uh, project. In front of the city, that is taking a tax break, uh, to, 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 uh, change of the city. It's not gonna be the, that the community it was fifty years ago for the rest of the term. Things are gonna change. We don't know what that change is, but we need to work with partners that own properties in the city in order to pull that off. The city is not going to be able to dictate any single property owner. You could only do this and nothing else because the law won't allow us to. That's inhibiting people's ability to invest in the city. I agree with Autumn about what you were saying about creating spaces in this development that can be beneficial for the residents. But who's gonna pay for it? And whoever's gonna pay for it is gonna expect to get something back in return for it. Probably an increase in their investment, like the return on their investment, just like any other business owner. So we need to keep those things into account. We need to keep into account things like whichever tax benefit, uh, option, whether it's pilot tip or something else. Those things may have restrictions on what you're allowed to do with the property, if you're taking advantage of the expensive program. So there's, it's, it's not black and white. We need to do all the research. We need to work with partners like the Seattle company to figure out things that are beneficial, um, to the residents, to business owners and, uh, to the property owner. And it's, uh, it's not gonna, everybody's gonna have to compromise to some degree. Whether we want to hear that or not, that's gonna be the case. From my perspective, that's what I believe.
To bring back to our last study session, um, we talked a little bit about corporate rentals and we had discussed potentially updating the, um, our ordinance such that, you know, penalties escalate up to losing the, it's not, I'm blanking on, we're not licensed.
You're licensed or you're not licensed?
Yeah, they hit. So, yeah, up, up to losing their certificate, you know, for, for being a regular unit. So have we moved on that at all? Are we going to move on that at all?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a risk around it.
But there is, uh, some, uh, session.
Yeah.
About that, which I think will be in that part of this, you know, the balance of like that things like using corporate social relations to also manage, uh, triple other property, you know, the situation.
Anything else? Is there a change?
Yes. I know where that's at.
Anyone, um?
Uh, during the last study session, uh, I was supposed to, I brought up, yeah, you post a column, I'm gonna get a few minutes about city priorities. I was supposed to come up with some suggestions for high-level topics so that we get a sort of innovation around our, uh, right then and there. So I'm gonna work with Mike, you know, try to get somebody to like our suggestions. They would like us to try, uh, in our, um, the next opportunity to get, try and put something on the calendar for a column. What would you, I don't know, if that's gonna be.
All right, does anyone have anything else? And then we'll adjourn from, um, the study session.
So it's sent to.